So if you have any type of electronic communication device, if you please put it on silent or vibrating, we would appreciate that courtesy. We always begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and then we would ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. I will note, request respectfully that keep the family of our county solicitor, Jason Madore, in your thoughts and prayers. His father passed away a few days ago, so our sympathy goes out to the Madore family. With that, we'll have the pledge and Commissioner Sinado, could you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sinado?
Here.
Commissioner Bogler?
Here. Our third colleague, Commissioner Kennedy, is out of town today, but as long as there are two of us here, that constitutes quorum, so we can move forward with conducting our business. Hopefully, everybody got a copy of the agenda. Under procedures, I'll note that we set aside two opportunities for public comment, one in just a few moments and then one before we adjourn. If you wish to comment, you're welcome to, you're welcome to speak both times. If you want to only speak once, that's fine, and if you're just here to listen, that's also fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters, and if you try to limit your time to about five minutes or so, we'd appreciate that courtesy. Moving along under the agenda, next for row officer reports and comments, we always set aside time in case any of our elected row officers have any items of business to transact, but today appears they don't. That takes us to public comment. If you have a comment, we'll recognize you and if you state your name for the record and we'll hear what you have to say. Again, if you prefer to wait till the end of the meeting, that's also fine. Hearing none, we'll keep going. Thank you. Fiscal and contractual, we have received a number of repository property bids from the tax claim office, six of which have been accepted by the other local taxing bodies and nine of which have been rejected by local taxing bodies. As we've explained in the past, the process for making a bid on a parcel in the county's repository requires the bidder to submit the bid, it is then forwarded to the local municipality and the school district in which the property is located. Once those two bodies take action, it then comes before the commissioners for either approval or rejection. The law stipulates that all three taxing bodies must agree to the bid in order for it to be accepted. If one of the three bodies objects, the bid is then not accepted. Chris, what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, I'm going to enter into the record the first six that have been accepted, and then unless you object, maybe we could take one motion for those six. Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you very much. And what number do we start with?
Three twenty-two.
Three two two, thank you. This first bid is for a parcel on Fording Road in Nishanik Township. The ID number is two five dash three eight seven seven zero zero. A bid of $600 was made on this parcel by Mr. Matthew Bichery. The documents that have been provided to us by the tax claim bureau indicate that the Nishanik Township School District approved the bid, and it appears as though we did not hear back from the Nishanik Township Supervisors. Each taxing body is given a 60-day period in which to respond, and if we do not receive a response, it is then deemed approved. So that takes us to us, and again, Chris, unless you have comments on this first one, we'll keep going. The next one would be number three twenty-three, and this is for parcel number zero seven, zero one nine eight zero zero. It is a parcel in the Seventh Ward of the City of Newcastle on South Ashland Avenue. Mr. Thomas Amodi presented a bid of $550 for this parcel. The Newcastle City Council voted at a public meeting to accept this offer. This was done on September 26th. It appears that we did not hear back from the Newcastle area school district. Proposed resolution three twenty-four would be a parcel located in Slippery Rock Township, parcel number three two dash nine zero one four two eight. A $500 bid was made by Laurie George. Parcel is located at four three eight Woodmere Drive Extension. This bid was accepted by the Slippery Rock Township Supervisors on September 8th of this year. We did not hear back from the Laurel area school district. Number three twenty-five is also located in Slippery Rock Township. Laurie George made a $500 bid for parcel number three two dash nine zero one four three four, located at one four six Allison Memorial Highway. The Slippery Rock Township Supervisors accepted the bid on September 8th, and the tax claim office did not hear back from the Laurel area school district. The next resolution, number three twenty-six, is for a parcel in Union Township. A $600 bid was made by Eduardo Francisco de Silva for parcel number three four dash zero three nine nine zero on Cliff Street in Union Township. The Union Township Supervisors accepted this bid on August 21st, and we did not hear back from the Union area school district. And the final bid that has been accepted, number, resolution number three twenty-seven, this is also in Union Township, a $600 bid was submitted by Eduardo Francisco de Silva for parcel number three four dash three eight five zero zero zero, located on Spring Street in Union Township. The Union Township Supervisors approved this bid on August 21st. We did not hear back from the Union area school district. Chris, these are resolutions three twenty-two up through and including three twenty-seven. Before I accept a motion, do you have any questions or concerns?
No.
Would you be willing to make a motion then to approve or accept the bids that have been submitted?
I move that we accept the six bids that were submitted.
I will second your motion. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, thank you, and we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, the remaining bids were all not accepted. We'll start with resolution three twenty-eight. The bid was made in the amount of $525 by Glece Kelly de Silva. This was for a parcel in the Eighth Ward of the City of Newcastle, located at Chart Street, property number zero eight zero four nine two zero zero. Newcastle City Council rejected the bid at their public meeting on September 26th, and we did not hear from the Newcastle area school district. Resolution three twenty-nine, also in the City of Newcastle, a bid of $525 was submitted by Glece Kelly de Silva for parcel number zero eight dash zero one six three zero zero, located on Moravia Street in the Eighth Ward of the City of Newcastle. Newcastle City Council rejected the bid on September 26th of this year. We did not hear from the Newcastle area school district. Resolution three thirty was a bid in the amount of $525. The bidder was Glece Kelly de Silva, parcel number zero eight dash zero one three four zero zero, located on South Jefferson Street in the Eighth Ward of the City of Newcastle. Newcastle City Council rejected the bid on September 26th. Resolution three three one, Jarrell Jones made a $500 bid for parcel number zero five dash one three six seven zero zero, located on Winkley Avenue in the Fifth Ward of the City of Newcastle. Newcastle City Council rejected the bid on September 26th, 2025. We did not hear from the Newcastle area school district. Resolution three three two, Justin Martino submitted a bid of $500 for parcel number zero seven dash one two zero five zero zero on North Liberty Street in the Seventh Ward of the City of Newcastle. Newcastle City Council rejected the bid on September 26th, and we did not hear from the Newcastle area school district. Resolution three thirty-three, Justin Martino submitted a bid of $500 for parcel number zero eight dash zero one five two zero zero, located on Hannah Street in the Eighth Ward of the City of Newcastle. City Council of Newcastle rejected the bid on September 26th, and we did not hear from Newcastle area school district. Resolution three thirty-four, Justin Martino bid $500 for parcel number zero five one three four two zero zero in the Fifth Ward of Newcastle on Voguen Street. Newcastle City Council rejected the bid on September 26th, 2025, and we did not hear from the Newcastle area school district. Resolution three thirty-five, a $525 bid was made by Glece Kelly de Silva for a parcel on Hannah Street in the Eighth Ward of Newcastle, parcel number zero eight dash zero one five two zero zero. City Council rejected this bid on September 26th, and we did not hear from the Newcastle area school district. Resolution three thirty-six, Laurie George submitted a bid of $500 for parcel number zero three dash zero eight one zero zero zero. This is located on Martin Street in the Third Ward of the City of Newcastle. City Council rejected the bid on September 26th, and we did not hear from the Newcastle area school district. These are resolutions three twenty-eight up through and including three thirty-six. They've all been rejected by the local municipality. It now comes to us, Mr. Sinado, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think that you answer this, I know in the past that ones from the municipality who objects is actually defeated. Am I correct?
That's correct. In order for them to be accepted, all three taxing bodies have to agree.
So theoretically, we can roll.
Yes, but according to our solicitor, we still need to take that form allowance. That being said, unless you have other questions, would you wish to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we defeat this at this time, with it already being defeated by City Council in Newcastle and Hooking. You know, there was no paperwork submitted, all of them, and hopefully neighbors can eventually, and get other paperwork to council. I know they probably do their diligence on this, so I'm not going to question that, especially if there's no paperwork. So I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, and for the record, those are resolutions three twenty-eight up through and including three thirty-six. I will second your motion, and unless you have other comments, we can take a roll call.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have four warrant registers that have been submitted to the Board of Commissioners by the County Comptroller's Office. Warrant registers are also known as check reconciliation registers. It's a listing of all of the, excuse me, the bills that have been paid by the Comptroller's Office. They are dated October 7, 8, 9, and 10, and they're here if anybody wishes to look at them. Chris, I'll give you whatever time you need to look these over, and then whenever you're ready, I would welcome a motion for us to accept these documents.
Chairman, I've had an opportunity to look them over, and I'm going to make that motion in order to have that same opportunity.
I appreciate that, and I will second your motion. Any discussion?
No.
Thank you, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The minutes of the October 7 meeting are in our packet. Chris, take whatever time you need to look them over, and whenever you're ready, I could accept a motion for us to adopt the minutes.
I want to make a motion that we accept the minutes in class.
I'll second your motion. Do you have any questions or concerns?
No.
Thank you, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under correspondence, we received one document, came to us through the County Planning Commission. It is submitted to us by Hill Corp Energy Company, providing notification that Hill Corp intends to approach the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, specifically their air quality program, to renew and modify their general plan approval and operating permit for the operation of emission sources at its natural gas central facility, which is known as the Mahoning Siegel Central Facility, located in Mahoning Township. Law requires that the local governing bodies receive copies of these documents, so if I'm not mistaken, Mahoning Township Supervisors would have received this correspondence as well. We don't play any active role in this, this is a matter between the applicant and the DDP, but we are, they are required to make us aware of this action on their part. Chris, any questions on this issue?
No.
Would you be willing to make a motion to accept this document?
I can motion accept the document.
I will second your motion and ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under Commissioner Reports and Comments, I just have a couple quick items to mention. Later today, Mr. Sinado and I will be going up to the Mercer County Courthouse for a public meeting that begins at 1:30. The three of us, the three Lawrence Commissioners and the three Mercer Commissioners, serve as the governing board for West Central Job Partnership, which is a two-county organization that handles both Mercer and Lawrence. They, among other things, operate the two CareerLink offices, the one here in the City of Newcastle and one up in the City of Sharon. So we do meet every quarter, and again, this meeting will be at 1:30 today at the Mercer County Courthouse, and it's open to the public. The only other thing I'll mention is that over the weekend, I had an interesting opportunity. The Newcastle Public Library, in conjunction with the Lawrence County Sportsman's Association, had a very nice tour of the Sportsman's Association facility out in North Beaver Township, and it's the second time I've been there, but it's a go-run organization, and they have over 2,000 members belong to this group. It's kind of tucked away between, it borders Route 18, Route 18 would be to the west, and the Beaver River would be to the east, and it's kind of hard to find, but it's worth visiting. So we appreciate the Sportsman's Club opening up their facility for this tour. That's all I have, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Sinado.
Thank you, Chairman. I know we didn't say much last week, I know that both of us went up to the Northwest Regional Commissioners, Forest County a week ago Monday. I thought it was very helpful, and we have an opportunity to visit the Commissioners from our Northwest Region. We do that on a quarterly basis as well, and that actually rotates amongst the, how many counties do we have, 10 or 12?
I think 10.
Or 10. No, you might be right, it is 12, 10, 12, whatever counties, each quarter we go to that county, and there's a presentation, and we get an opportunity to learn a little bit about what's going on in that municipality. I think, and about another three meetings will be, they will come to Lawrence County, and we plan on letting them know what we have to offer. So I think that's an important thing. I had an opportunity this weekend to go out to Bessemer for the Oktoberfest, there's a new facility out there. It's that center which used to be the St. Anthony's Church, and I give them credit, they really did a nice job with that facility. There's a lot of people coming out there for the event, I think it was a two-day event, I just had an opportunity, and Saturday, and I think it's good for the Bessemer community with that event center, have more future events out in Bessemer, Bessemer community. And on yesterday, I actually stopped, yes, I'm sorry, on Sunday, I stopped down for a resto, a new restaurant in town, they celebrated their one-year anniversary in downtown Newcastle. So they had a special buffet, and a very reasonable $25 if you have a feast, and I wanted to go down for that because I think it's so important, we were all there when they opened their doors one year ago in downtown City of Newcastle, it's so critical for a new business to survive that first year. And I was very happy to see the number of people that were there, trying to support them, but I think it's very important for a community that will support all businesses in Lawrence County, hopefully all businesses, especially when it's downtown, and then if it's the stage, you've got the group pub, you have the Union Station, and you have the resto. Those are three new facilities within the last year or two located in downtown Newcastle, so that's critical that we, as a community, support all of them. And I had a chance to talk to the owner down there, he's really worked very hard in helping the staff to make it a success, so I just encourage people to try to support that restaurant, as well as every other local business we have in town. So that's pretty much all I have for today.
Chris, thank you very much. Well, that takes us to new business, and the first resolution is three thirty-seven. This falls under the heading of our Public Safety Department. Chad Strobel serves as the Director of that department. You may recall that last week, at his recommendation, as well as through consultation with the Pennsylvania Forestry Department, and consultation with some of the Fire Department chiefs throughout the county, we implemented a countywide burn ban, and you asked us to put this on the agenda today to review it and give us further updates and see what the status is, where we are at this point, so I'll turn it over to you, Chad.
Good morning, thank you guys, I thank you all for hearing me. First off, I was notified this morning, I was walking in the office, that one of the local fire departments had put up a post last night saying the burn ban was lifted, and they still had to go to township to get permits to burn according to their ordinances, so I had a couple people call me saying, is this lifted, is this done? So I'm not sure how that information got out, I wasn't able to get ahold of anybody from that fire department yet this morning to see where that information came from and why they were posting it. So that obviously did not come from us, so that is false information that was spread out there somehow. Just to go over where we're currently at, I've sent you all a lot of fire chiefs some information over the past few days regarding the fire danger levels in the Commonwealth. We're currently at a low fire danger level observed. Most of the state is green, except for four counties up north, I believe it's Warren, Forest, McKeen, and Elk, that area up in the north-central part of the state, is at a moderate level. Forecast for tomorrow is again a low level, so we're still continuing to run low. We had about two days over the weekend, or at the end of last week, that we were at a moderate level, but currently, the fire danger observed and forecast is low for our area. I ran some reports last night, sitting around after dinner, we've had about 10 calls, 10 to 12 calls, depending on how they're reported, for burning issues. Most were in the City of Newcastle, where burning complaints called in by neighbors, concerned neighbors, concerned citizens, saying that something was burned in somebody's yard. The fire department went out quickly, extinguished it, and told them it's a burn ban stop. We had a brush fire that was, from what I can read in the reports and the call logs, was caused by a combine harvesting some crops in a field. It seems like it hit a wire, possibly, a telephone pole, got some wires wrapped up which caused a brush fire. That was quickly handled, by Little Beaver.
Oh, Little Beaver Township?
Yeah, Clark River in the area, Little Beaver Township. There was one there, we had one out in, you know, West State Street, a car went off the road, other carriage must have lit the grass along the roadway on fire, it was caused by the accident. We had one fire that was called in in Palaskey Township, it was ended up in a control burn, the fire department went out, we told them just let it burn out, it weren't. And then we had one up in, can't remember the road name, but I think there was also a control burn. But really, you know, there hasn't been any decrease or change in the numbers since last week to this week. If anything, the stats say there's more, because people are calling, reporting people burning. It's actually, we're getting the fire departments out on the road more often now because the neighbors are calling and saying, there's fires going on here and there. Forecast is right now, I looked up this morning, National Weather Service says Friday night and the Saturday morning is supposed to get rain, also, it looks like all day Sunday, we're supposed to have rain. So it's going to get wet over the next few days. Currently, the burn bans in the state are the same as they were when I reported last week, Cameron County, Clearfield County, Elk County, Hungiman County, Jefferson, R. County, and Somerset. I checked the state parks, there's no burn bans in the state parks, so they're not doing Going through those levels that I spoke about, the observed, with an observed forecast of low fire danger, there's no recommendation for banning all burning, it just says safest to burn, it's safest, doesn't say it's safe, but it's the best conditions. For moderate danger level, which we were at, there's a chance we may go back into the way the weather looks, I doubt we will go back into it. They say try to burn, the guidance is to burn early evening when they're still dew on the ground, or early morning when they're still dew on the ground, late evening when the dew's coming back on the ground. So their guidance is that high, it's discouraged according to the C N R warnings, and very high is when it should not occur. So we've been staying consistently at low, touching a moderate for a day or so, then going back to low. Over the next week, 79 or 76 degrees is forecast for Saturday, other than that, we're going to have, you know, cities all in low temperature, 60s, top 70 degrees. The humidity's going to be up overnight, we're supposed to meet the dew point every night, so every day we wake up, there's should be some type of moisture on the ground, which is why I suggest a morning burns. And it looks promising over the next week at least, the 10-day forecast, so. My honest opinion and my feelings are that the burn ban could be lifted, with the guidance going out to the public, the, you know, burn in the mornings or the evenings if you have to avoid it if it's windy, but moving into it, last week when we did it, our numbers really never matched the urgency we had thought had. You know, many calls, there was 20 over a month period, and they all ended up being small fires, the largest one took an hour to extinguish. We haven't had any since then that have gotten out of hand or gotten crazy. The weather looks good, it's calming down, driving around this weekend, there was no shortage of small fires everywhere, the smell of small fire smoke in here, so no... I think the farmers may have been keeping the ban, and some of the, out in the Laurel area, it's heating up, but for the most part, it was smelled like fall, driving around all day and night, so. Just looking at the numbers, looking at the weather, and looking at the counties around us, looking at the counties across the just looking at the numbers, looking at the weather, and looking at the counties around us, looking at the counties across the state, seven out of sixty-seven counties implemented burn bans, the parks haven't implemented burn bans, within the park limits, state park limits. Illinois was, um, Clear, Clear Creek State Park, had, um, warnings issued, but they never banned burning within the state park limits. Uh, I'd like to I'm the optimist, and we would like to trust the public to be smart and, you know, burn safely. With the guidance of burning in the early mornings or later on in the evenings, when the temperatures drop and the humidity's coming up, and there's getting some dew on the ground. Um, yeah. But that's currently where we're at and, um, and my, my observations, my thoughts on the matter. I have gotten reverse calls and messages, and once it's, once it's done, you know, I think a lot of it's put into that season of set out a fire at night, and some of our local businesses that have the events where they, you know, sell time slots and spots for wildfires. But with the way things are looking, with the rain coming this weekend, the low temperatures, the moisture in the mornings, and maybe things. I think it's, you know, I think it would be safe to lift this burn ban, uh, talk to the directors around other counties and, you know, they have seen no need for it, I talked to Berks or Butler Beaver around us, they have no intentions of, you know, pushing for one. Mr. Gadsby was reaching out to all their, their people as well, but nobody ever.
He's the state forester?
Regional.
Excuse me, regional fore-
Yeah, Fice, I believe was his name, was the, um, played the representative for the Commonwealth level, but Chad Gadsby is the, this region forest area. But having that support either way, it's just my observations and opinions.
But let me ask a procedural question. Because when you, you appeared before us last week, and as we've done a few times in previous years, there's a, uh, statutory process we have to follow, and you followed it, whereby, uh, you had the consultation with the forester, which then required, uh, additional consultation with, uh, numerous fire department chiefs throughout the county. And the conclusion that was reached at, at the time was that it would be prudent for us to implement, uh, the ban. In order to lift the ban, which I'm hearing you say you're recommending that this, at this time that we lift it, do you, do you have to circle back, now, and, and I heard you say you, you've had conversations with this gentleman, and I assume you've been in touch with at least some of the fire chiefs, so, so do you have to be as formal coming back and requesting a lifting of the ban as you had to be when you asked us to implement?
That is not documented in the, the, uh, procedure.
I see.
It lists the procedure too dead, it states it will automatically expire after thirty days unless, you know, written, um, recommendation is received from C N R, the commissioners, board of commissioners vote on it. But there's no, it was from all I've seen, the, you know, sections of that statute, I've read, there's nothing outlining the process for, you know, hands like that rescinding and removing it. I can research that more and reach out and, you know, come back next week.
Well, let me throw another option out to you. And, and I'm not married to this, I'm just throwing it out for purposes of thought and maybe discussion. Uh, given the, the forecast, we're here on a Tuesday, and it doesn't appear we're gonna have rain until at least either Friday, Saturday, or it sounds like definitely on Sunday. What if we were to extend this until uh, next Sunday, this coming Sunday? And then you have the rainfall, and then we could lift it, now that's just a thought.
Uh, my other, uh, my other recommendation would be, as you said, kind of predate this, but it won't. And I was thinking either Friday or Saturday, but we know we've got rain, it'll be coming in, so yeah, that was another option, I'm, I'm fine with that, so.
Let me turn it over to Commissioner Sonoda for his comments or questions.
Sort of on the same line as you, Chairman, I think. We just did this last week. Have you been in contact with any of the fire chiefs?
I haven't spoken with them, nobody's, you know, I've, I've reached out, I've sent out emails, and it wasn't, you know, the thought, my thoughts and everything, I haven't heard anything. I didn't, honestly, I did not hear from anybody previously when they wanted the ban. I sent the information out, I included you, you know, in the email I sent out, just kind of repulse them. And, uh, the only person that heard back were from, uh, Chief Rogers from Scott Township, uh, Chief Teague from Slippery Rock, and, uh, Chief Kobe from the Newcastle Fire Department. Those are the only three that responded to my request.
And then as you recall, Chief Allegra happened to be here last Tuesday.
Yeah.
Taylor Township.
He did not respond, but he was here, so they, they don't. I tried.
I, you know, I would be comfortable if we could take this up next Tuesday. And if the conditions happen over the weekend, as you're hearing, potentially could happen, the rain comes, we could lift this, if we were to lift this next Tuesday, it takes effect immediately from the time you vote on it, Chad, is that how that operates?
I believe so, I mean, that's last year.
Right, I just say it's not gonna be rain till the weekend, so it gives us an extra time, hopefully, we don't have these brush fires and anything else happen. You know, I would be comfortable with us waiting one more week. And then if the conditions occur as your predictions potentially could happen, I have no problem with the ban. But at this point, you know, we've seen weather shift, and all of a sudden, we don't get any of this rain.
Yeah.
It could be another issue, so that's why I'm in.
Yeah, I, you know, as I threw out, the possibility of having it expire of either Saturday or Sunday, but we're only talking two extra days. My concern is, uh, if, if, if we, if we were to end it today, let's say. We still have three or four days ahead of us without any rain. Um, I don't want to put our first responders at any additional risk. Uh, you, you made an interesting point, though, that, that some municipalities already have ordinances governing burning within their orders. I think in the Shannick, you have to have a permit to burn, and my recollection was, this may have changed, but you're only allowed to burn on Saturdays. Uh, I think that's what the Shannick's ordinance is, I could be, I could be wrong.
Yeah, I'm not certain, um, I know you, as my permit, like, I reside in Shenango Township, we're allowed to burn, you know, papers and normal combustibles on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Tuesdays, Saturdays. Must live in China.
But we're not allowed to have recreational fires as long as they're small and kept to a ring any time, so. I know there are ordinances out there that already limit, but you got for the rural areas, there's a lot of agricultural exemptions, so, I don't know. Over I notice.
I'm inclined to go with you, Chris, I, I, uh, I'd rather err on the side of caution. I, I hear what you're saying, none of the surrounding counties in Pennsylvania have implemented it, although my recollection is that Mahoning and Trumbull, one or both of them in Ohio have implemented them. Again, I could be wrong, but, uh.
I believe those are at the state level standing.
I see.
Is that every year in the spring for those first couple of dry months, and then the fall for those last couple of months where it's dry, it, it's a standing space clockwork which happens, yeah.
Well, now, you've, you've pointed out the past, you know, our, the way in which Pennsylvania is governed is different than where Commonwealth that you've pointed out, Ohio isn't. What we could do, uh, we could table this, because this is currently, this, this resolution would rescind the ban, the ban effective today. We could table this to next Tuesday. And, uh, bring it up, and then if we get the rain over the weekend, we could lift it next Tuesday. If that's your desire, do you, do you strongly object to that course of action?
No.
Okay.
I just think that, you know, I remember last week when we did this, we had over ten fire chiefs that wanted a ban. And it's been seven days.
Yeah, that was a lot of push from
Right.
a fairly zealous state person. Nobody had, previously, as I spoke, it was not one person that come to me prior to that. Reached out and kind of pushed.
Did you got ten that said they wanted it?
Corrected it, yes.
Just want to make sure, I mean, that's seven days ago, so it gives us seven more days. Hopefully, the rain's gonna come, we can put this behind us like we do. I mean, I don't want to wait thirty days if it's unnecessary, we don't want to wait any longer if it's necessary, but as Chairman Bogers said, I think, erring on the side of caution, you know, because we don't want to put our first responders in risk, especially, most of them are volunteers. And it's, you know, it's, they don't have an easy job out there, and, so, let's hope the rain comes, Chad, so keep, keep a, keep an eye on that. I know you keep us informed daily, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, that information you've been giving us is very helpful. Well, given the discussion that we've had, uh, this is Resolution three thirty-seven, we can either approve it, uh, reject it, or table it. I'll leave it up to you for a motion if you may.
Motion, we table this for next Tuesday, and hopefully, we can vote this next Tuesday.
I'll second it, I'll also note we'll have, uh, more than likely Commissioner Kennedy will be with us and will have his input as well. As Chris said, let's hope we get a decent amount of rain. Hope it all comes in the evening when people are sleeping, so they don't interfere with outside activities for uh, no, I, I, I very much appreciate all the effort you've put into it, and, uh, as long as you don't strongly object to us waiting one more week, I think that's the approach we're
No, five of us.
Thank you. The motion is to table the resolution, I believe I offered the second, so could we have a roll call to table, please?
Commissioner Sonoda?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, the motion, the matter is tabled for one more, thanks so much.
No, no problem, yeah, I'll keep you guys updated for the next couple of weeks, so.
Please do. Thank you so much, Chad.
You're welcome.
Planning is with us, uh, Rebecca Schaefer from the Planning Office, good morning. How are you today?
Oh, wow.
That's good, doing well, thanks for your patience. Last week, we opened some bids, uh, as it relates to the park improvement project in the township of Shenango, the, uh, the, uh, funding for these improvements comes from the Community Development Block Grant Fund that we administer. And, uh, I believe we had six bids, I recall, we finally opened.
Yes.
And, uh, today, you're coming back to us with a recommendation. So what would you like for us to consider?
Yeah, um, according to the, the bid opening, I would like to recommend along with, um, Al Birik and the township, all three supervisors. Uh, they would like to move forward with awarding to fire excavating. Um, so, you know, so we will award with your approval for the total project cost of ninety-eight thousand forty-five dollars. And that will, um, ultimately be paid out of, I believe it's two years of C D B G, um, Shenango Township funds. So, and I believe Vanessa, I, I had that notice of award, did, did you get the notice of award? Okay, I did get it back from him, so I can be sure that you have that.
Yeah, I only have the resolution, so if you can email it to me, I'll give you the rest.
And also the contract, so we're reviewing the contract now, but, um.
Given our schedules today, uh, because we do have to leave here about eleven-thirty to go to Mercer. Um, it's possible this may not get signed until tomorrow, I hope that doesn't cause you any problem. Would I be right in that statement?
Yeah, I mean, depending on, um, quickly, we, that night meeting, and, you know.
Yeah, if you, yeah, that's true, whenever we finish here, but, but the latest we can get to would be tomorrow, how's that?
That's fine, no, yeah.
So I'll be here early in the morning, I assume you will be, we'll try to get to it as quickly as we can.
Yes.
Uh, Chris, do you have questions of Rebecca?
No, I just remember last week, uh, I asked that question to Rebecca, and she said they were all legitimate, solid views. And this is the lowest bid, so, um, I'm just happy to see that they, they got it in reasonable cost, because if I recall, there was a spread from ninety-eight thousand to, I think, three hundred thousand, so.
That's like fair enough, C D B G.
Yeah, so I mean, if you're comfortable that this is the lowest bid, it's a legitimate solid company, uh, I think it's, uh, good for Shenango, good for everybody. You know, we're saving a lot of money for, uh, for projects, so, yes, I would make a motion to accept this.
Thank you, sir, I'll second the motion, assuming you're in accord with it. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for Resolution three thirty-eight, it's been seconded, there is no other discussion, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonoda?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate all your hard work. Take care. Resolution three thirty-nine comes from Children and Youth Services, we have Karen and Donald, looks like Karen's going.
Yeah, I got this one.
All right, well, good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Uh, this is, uh, I'm assuming a, a, is this a contract renewal?
Yes, this is a renewal contract with George Junior Republic, we mainly use them for the intensive residential programs for youth that we need to remove from the home.
Okay.
Um, it's our closest facility in Newcastle, so that is nice and convenient to get the family visitation, and get that reunification back into the home of the kids and the families.
Grove City, which is in Mercer County. I assume the contract would cover both the parks, both juvenile probation and C Y, Children and Youth Services.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Mister, and of course, we've been dealing with this agency forever.
Yes.
You have a good law.
I've been here for twenty-some years, and George Junior's been there that whole time.
That's my recollection as well, that, that you live it every day. Uh, Mr. Sonoda, do you have questions of Karen?
Oh, Karen, I think that, uh, you're, you're, you're happy with this, it's, I have no problem.
Thank you, would you wish to make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept this.
This is Resolution three thirty-nine, I will second your motion, and unless, and if anything else, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Sonoda?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good to see you both, thank you both for being here. We have a number of, uh, board appointments to make today. The first three involve the New Castle County Planning Commission. Uh, it's a, it's a nine-member board, uh, all, all volunteer, the, the state law gives us the authority to appoint alternate members, and, and currently, we have two alternates, uh, serving. One is Higia Moss Eggleston, who is from the city of Newcastle. She's been a, a very, uh, active member, even being an alternate, she's attended most of the meetings and offers a lot of good input. Uh, a year or two ago, we appointed, uh, Ben Bush, who resides in the Shannick Township. It's my understanding that, uh, he plans to submit a letter of resignation, I don't know that we've received one yet.
I have.
But verbally, we've been told, you, you've heard that as well. Okay, so we anticipate that Mr. Bush will be stepping aside. What Amy has asked us to consider, and, and she checked on this in terms of, does the law, uh, 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 state that there's only X number of positions for alternates, and the law is silent, apparently, so we could name as many alternates as we wish. So she's recommending three individuals. Um, Chris, if you'd like, since they're all three for the, uh, Planning Commission, can I enter them into the record, maybe take one motion for the three?
Absolutely.
If you wish.
Yes.
The first, and this is in no particular order, but this would be Resolution three forty. Uh, the recommendation is that Mr. Maxwell Frederick, who resides in Wilmington Township, be appointed as an alternate member to the Lawrence County Planning Commission. States here, the alternate shall be entitled to participate in all proceedings and discussions of the commission. Uh, and, uh, it does include the right to cast a vote as a voting member during those proceedings, although I, I seem to although I seem to recall that that's if the alternate is there and allowing for a quorum, I believe. I believe if there's a quorum, the alternate does not vote. I wish Rebecca would have stuck around, or I should have asked her to stick around, but that's my recollection. If I'm wrong, Amy will, she'll let me know. So the first gentleman is Mister Maxwell Frederick of Wilmington Township. That would be Resolution 340, Resolution 341. This is a familiar name. The planning office is recommending that we consider Mister James Gagliano Jr. of North Beaver Township. Mister Gagliano, as many of you know, was the director of the Planning Commission a number of years ago, and then more recently, he served as our county administrator. Then upon his retirement, Mister Vanasco took that position. So Mister Gagliano is interested in serving. And then finally, Resolution 342, there is a gentleman who resides in Shanick Township. I believe he's currently a member of the Shanick Township Planning Commission, and he has expressed an interest in serving. Mister John Logue, again, a resident of Shanick Township. So these are Resolutions 340, 341, 342, to serve as alternate members on the County Planning Commission. Chris, any comments or thoughts on your part?
Yeah, looking at the three names, I think these are all excellent choices. I know Max is with Lord Lawrence, and he's been to meetings, and he's not even asked to come to meetings. I saw Mr. Logue last week, very impressed with him, his background is very knowledgeable, and for him to come out and play good, as he did last week, and serve, yeah. Give him credit, and Mister Gagliano, I've known for many years, and I know he's dedicated, serves on many boards, and he has the planning experience as well. So I think with these three alternates, I don't think we can go wrong. Eggleston, I did not know she was an alternate. She's been at every meeting I've been at.
She's an alternate.
Well, that's dedication.
Yeah.
Who knows out to her for her efforts? So I'm saying, I think we've got some really good people on that board, the Planning Commission. And I think that's so important, and they have that rather experienced in Mercer County. So I have no problem nominating all three of these people as alternates.
Would you wish to make a motion?
Make a motion to nominate.
Okay, and then Resolutions 340, 341, and 342, I will second your motion and ask Vanessa to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The county commissioners are also responsible for making appointments to the county's Federated Library System. And we reached out to Andrew Henley, and he brought back three recommendations, and I believe they are all reappointments, if I'm not mistaken. And again, and Chris, if you don't mind, we'll talk about all three, maybe take one motion for the three of them. And again, no particular order. The first gentleman, this would be a reappointment, Mister Joseph Ambrosini of the city of Newcastle. His term would expire on June thirty of twenty-twenty-six. Number 344 would be Mister John Long of North Beaver Township, who I believe may be with us today. Good morning, Mister Long.
How do you do?
Good, we appreciate you joining us, and this says appointed. Is that language correct, or are you being reappointed?
Reappointed.
You are being reappointed.
So his, they had a mistake.
There was an error in the paperwork.
Yeah.
Oh.
The terms are actually three-year terms.
Yes.
So, but we are scheduled, our record showed that his term was gonna end twenty-twenty-five. It should actually end twenty-twenty-six.
So it's basically a correction of a previous resolution, and that's the case for.
Yeah, the first two are otherwise.
Oh, John Ambrosini as well.
For Mister, okay. So it's a technical.
Phil Tamdrack, his three-year term has expired.
Correct.
Asking to be reappointed.
Okay. So in the resolution relative to Mister Long, it does say appointed, that we should maybe note that's reappointed, right? So I'll note that on my document here, that Mister Long is being reappointed. And as noted, Mister Long is a resident of North Beaver Township. And then Resolution 345, as we just discussed, would be Mister Philip Tramdeck, who resides in the city of Newcastle. His term would expire June thirty of twenty-twenty-eight. So again, the first two, Mister Ambrosini and Mister Long, were making basically a technical correction. They haven't been serving, they will continue to serve through June thirty of twenty-twenty-six, whereas Mister Tramdeck were reappointed, again, I should say reappointed, for the term to expire on June thirty of twenty-twenty-eight. We appreciate your willingness to serve, Mister Long, and I might digress for just a second. We appreciate, I believe you wrote a letter to the editor recently regarding Quaker Falls Park out in the homing township, and we appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for recognizing that. It upset us, and I thought I'd let it be known.
No, and we're grateful for that. We're proud of that park. As you know, it's a beautiful site, and we're doing our best to maintain it, keep it safe for people. But thank you. A lot of people will talk, but some, most people won't take that next step, and you took the next step, so thank you for that.
Thank you for recognizing that.
Certainly. Chris, these are resolutions 343, 344, 345, all related to the Federated Library Board. Are you, first, I'll see if you have comments or questions.
Yeah, I just want to echo Chairman Boger. Mister Long, thank you for your efforts, and we were just as upset as you are. It's been a lot of effort put into that park. It's the last site I've been here almost two years now, and Commissioner Kennedy, who goes out there as well to check on it. It's just disturbing to us how people would think of throwing stuff like that. If we are gonna take action, the best we can to make sure, whether it's through security systems and everything else, and whoever done it, we want prosecuted to the fullest extent, just because. That, and we have some other properties, as far as bridges, where we've passed manholes and things over the years. So we want to look at all of that, you know, send a message out there, it's not, we're not gonna tolerate it. It costs the taxpayer money, and, you know, especially the park out there. So it's really looking good. We're getting a lot of visitors, out-of-state visitors, which is what we're doing. And just to follow up on that, Chairman, thank you for your service of the library, and you serve on many boards. I'm sure St. Clair Gas Station coming out there.
Mount Jackson Museum Foundation.
I know, yes.
Yeah, we're kind of at a standstill at the moment. We've run out of funding, and we've been approaching the community about additional funding to help us. A complete, we want to put up a historic barn structure, make it an event center for the community, but at this point, we're at a standstill, too.
Do you have the St. Clair there now?
Yeah, gas station's open, we welcome small groups like.
I remember there was nothing, and we were talking about it. It takes effort, it takes time, and you have all volunteers and.
It's all volunteers.
I know that, so we appreciate, and it was frustrating, but you're not alone in that. We have a lot of organizations that are trying to.
I would add, we've opened a gas station up to small community organizations, like the class of sixty, of fifty-five and the class of fifty-six had reunions there. They only had about thirty people, but it was fine for that. I had my high school class reunion there of about sixty people, and it worked for that with a few outside tents, just a gathering space, and we took a donation for the use of it rather than charge people. We're just trying to do something nice for the community.
Oh, we appreciate that, like I said, and I remember St. Clair gas station. Down in Holly Town, I think we had a St. Clair. Remember those, Chairman?
Oh, I do, had the green dinosaur.
Green dinosaur, yes.
We've got the dinosaur on the roof.
Somewhere in my belongings at home, I have, it was my dad's, a St. Clair credit card.
Oh, for crying out loud.
Probably dates back to the fifties or sixties. I'll have to dig it out.
We'd love to have it. I'll put it on display.
I'll look for it, if there's information. I was out last few years ago, I think they still have a few St. Clair gas stations.
They have.
I can't remember where it was at, it was in Utah, or maybe Colorado, or somewhere. There was a St. Clair gas station.
We've reached out to them for donations, but so far, they haven't cared to respond.
Oh, we appreciate keeping the history alive.
Thank you.
All right, I will make a motion, we accept all three of these.
Thank you, Chris. I will second your motion and request a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving ahead with appointments. Oh, thank you, Mister Long. I, you know, in hindsight, and I owe you an apology. I probably could have pushed this way up at the beginning, so forgive me. I hope you found our meeting to be interesting.
I did. I had not been to one before, and I wanted to see what goes on, so. Plus, report back to these editing fellows, okay, we're good to go.
Yep, it's official. Thank you, Mister Long.
Oh, you bet.
The next Resolution 346 would reappoint Mister Brad Berlin of Wilmington Township. He has been serving as the Lawrence County Citizen Representative to the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission Board. Five people from Lawrence County serve on that board. The three of us, Commissioner Kennedy serves on the executive committee, Amy McKinney, our planning director, and Mister Berlin, and he wishes to be reappointed, the term expiring December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-nine. Chris, do you care to make a motion?
I do, and I want to just commend Mister Berlin, because I try to go there with SPC meeting in Pittsburgh, and Mister Berlin is usually there, so I commend him for that. I mean, it's a ride down to Pittsburgh.
Right.
We're fortunate, usually, him and our appointment up in Northwest.
Yeah, Mister McKinney, yeah.
He's usually there, too.
Right.
Also, you know, appoint people to boards, you never know, you know. And ones that have been appointed before I was here, children, are good people, and they're very dedicated, and they get no pay for it, so maybe that message needs to go out there. But no, I have no issues with Mister Berlin, and I'm impressed with him, and he's there all the time. So I make a motion, we appoint Mister Berlin.
I'll second your motion for Resolution 346 and ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 347, this pertains to the Lawrence County Airport Authority. Mister James R. Ferris Jr. of Shanick Township is asking to be reappointed for a five-year, to a five-year term. This would take effect actually retroactively to June one of this year, and his term would expire on May thirty-one of twenty-thirty. I do want to note that because this is an authority, we were required at two public meetings, and we did this. We announced at two public meetings that this opening had occurred, and that individuals could submit letters of interest to the commissioners. Mister Ferris was the only person that we heard from, so he wishes to be reappointed. Chris, I'll turn it over to you for your thoughts or a motion.
Mister Ferris, as I know, has been on that board for many, many years, and he's very dedicated to it, and I think he'll be a good choice to keep there, and he will perform.
You wish to make a motion?
I will make a motion for Mister Ferris to be reappointed, thank you.
I do want to clarify again, this is Mister James Ferris Jr., because both he and his dad, I believe, both reside in Shanick Township, so I want to make clear this.
They're both very active in the community as far as boards.
Right.
Yes.
So this is James Ferris Jr. We have a motion and a second, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next resolution is 348. And as you know, the county, as with all counties in Pennsylvania, have been receiving opioid settlement dollars. And our board created an advisory board to review requests that have come in from various agencies in the county to utilize some of these funds. The advisory board meets monthly. It reaches a conclusion as far as the recommendations concerned. I believe those recommended agencies have to be passed through to the state first, before it comes back to us. Mister Vanasco currently chairs our advisory board, and that board is bringing to us today the following, and then I'm gonna let Joe talk here. They're recommending following funds to the following grant applicants, which once again, have been vetted by the state's opioid board. The Lawrence County DUI program, dollar amount, one hundred thousand dollars. Bridging Recovery, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. The Newcastle City Fire Department, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars. And Game Changer, seventy-eight thousand five hundred. Joe, briefly, if you can, maybe just tell us a little bit about what they may be using these dollars for?
Absolutely. And your explanation of the process was perfect, and that's kind of the Lawrence County policy right now, where some counties, the commissioners will approve it right away, and payment will go out. But we didn't want to get stuck kind of holding back five or six years down the road, where we approve something prior to the trust approval. And so the way that our process works is that we discuss it at our meetings, our regularly scheduled meetings. If we have an approval by a majority, then we move it forward to the state's trust. Once the trust approves it, it comes back to us, and it's a pretty lengthy process, to be perfectly honest, but it's the safest possible process that we have right now. So, once it comes back to us, then, and if the state approves it at that point, then we'll bring it to the commissioners, which I'm doing today. We currently have about eight plans into the trust. However, we did receive verification, well, first of all, on September thirtieth, our last report was due to the state trust, our most recent report. We haven't heard back, nor will we until probably December or January on those ones. But these were the ones that came through just prior to that, early September, as approval from the state. We had received some feedback even in August, that these were gonna be approved, that there was no questions. The programs are the Lawrence County DUI Center. It's been a longstanding program that we've had. The issue that we're having right now is sometimes, I guess the old-school DUIs, you know, receiving payment for that was quite easy. It was a lot of times guys that, unfortunately, or girls who went to the bar happy hour after work and made a mistake, maybe had one, two minutes. Those folks typically pay. On the issues now with the opioid addiction, we're getting more opioid addiction than we are, quite frankly, DUIs. And it's harder for them to survive. So we, this has been approved in the past, this is kind of a reissue. We had originally approved it in twenty-twenty-two, and that hundred thousand that we gave them at that point had sustained up to this point, and we, they had put a request in and a plan to continue it going forward, which our board, our local opioid board was in base support of. So that was the first one. The second one is Bridging Recovery, and it's a new program. It was submitted to the local board. We actually met with some folks on the opioid trust board at the state level and discussed it, but it's an M A T program for the jail. And generally, what it does is it allows that percentage of our current prime character to be offset by M A T. They're already providing some of this, minus the therapy components and so forth, but this allows us to be able to get the jail funding needed to do a full-scale M A T program.
Help me with M A T.
Medical assisted treatment.
Thank you.
So it's basically medication-based treatment for individuals who are incarcerated in the Lawrence County Jail. The third one was the Newcastle City Fire Department, and it was for twenty-seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars, and it was for. And it was for, uh, life-saving, uh, apparatuses and so forth, when they go, the police department goes on all overdose calls and so forth. And it was for masks, gloves, um, all the different things that they would need on those calls to, to be effective, to be able to treat the individual. And the final one is Game Changer, and we've had it for, uh, this is also a reissue, this is for the third time, uh, since twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two that we initially had authorized it, it's for seventy-eight thousand, five hundred, and it's for our school program. Uh, they, they go to school and, and basically do, um, different presentations to the students to, I don't wanna call it scared straight, but, uh, so the students have an understanding, you know, and, uh, the opioid crisis, and, and, uh, how it can affect the family and deter an individual.
Well, thank you, and as you said, the process is somewhat lengthy, but that gives us some assurances as we, as we consider these proposals. I'll see if, uh, Mister Sanada has any questions.
No, I think all, all four are very worthy causes, the dashes to get approval, I know that it's sometimes very difficult to get these approvals.
It is.
And I think our system, which we implemented here over the last year, would be right with, uh, Mr. Vanasco about, you know, we won't do it until it's approved. The dollars are there, because, you know, in the past, approving, paying, and all gets rejected, and it affects us, you know, by.
It does, it does.
And especially with those dollars, and so I think we have a consistent place in Lawrence County that protects, the general fund protects us as a county. And, uh, I appreciate your efforts on this, and you're instrumental in, uh, developing that, so.
Thank you.
And I will make a motion, we approve these four.
I'll second your motion, and, uh, ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thanks again, Joe. Transfers are as follows, Chris, I'm gonna read them into the record, stop me if you have any questions. The Children and Youth Services Office is requesting a transfer of eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars from contracted provider care line item into that of caseworker visitation grant line item. The jail is asking for a transfer of ten thousand and five dollars, all of it coming from their medical expense line item. Ten thousand of it is going into their electric line item, and five dollars is going into their land, building, and rent line item. Judge Almodi's office is requesting a five hundred dollar transfer from her contingency into that of her staples line item. The sheriff's office is asking for a six hundred dollar transfer from their, uh, line item known as salary of deputies into that of their unemployment, uh, line item. Again, six hundred dollars. Judge Cartwright's office is requesting, uh, three hundred dollars, uh, from his contingency account into the equipment lease, uh, line item. Under the commissioner's office, a request of twenty thousand dollars into, from the contingency into contracted services. This is to, uh, assist with payment for an invoice for the audit. The assessment office is asking for a four thousand dollar transfer from their maintenance and repairs line item into that of, uh, land and building rental line item. This is for the retrieval of files for scanning. The domestic relations office asking for a seven thousand dollar transfer from salary of staff into their contract line item. It says contracted, but this is to cover their new Equifax contract. Wondering, should that be contracted services, do you think?
I think so, yes.
Okay, I figured, figured you would know for sure, we'll call that contracted services. Thanks, Joe. And Voter Services is requesting a twenty-five hundred dollar transfer from their contingency into their unemployment line item. Chris, do you have any questions on these requested transfers?
Yeah.
If you don't, then would you wish to make a motion to approve them?
I made a motion to approve all the transfers.
Thank you, sir, I will second your motion, and I'll ask Vanessa if she would call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. Some announcements, this board will meet again one week from today, October, uh, twenty-one of twenty twenty-five, at ten AM, it's open to the public. Tomorrow, uh, the monthly meeting of the Lawrence County Prison Board, uh, will meet in this room at twelve noon, open to the public. Chairman, Commissioner Sanada serves as chair of that seven-member board, as I mentioned, that's open to the public. Uh, public comment, I'll note that the room is empty at this time, so let me see, oh, and if Debbie Walker is watching or listening, I'll, we'll have your packet upstairs for you, Debbie. Uh, Mister Sanada, final concerns or comments?
No, I think we've, uh, taken care of the business for today.
We sure have tried, thank you, Chris. Does Vanessa or Joe, anything, the last minute, anything else? Okay, thank you, excuse me. There being no other business to be brought before the board, could I have an adjournment?
Okay, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second, all those in favor, please say aye.